Good evening and welcome to the May 13, 2020 work session of the Town Board. And I'm going to officially call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Cole?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Okay, very good. So the entire board is here. We're also joined this evening by Mark Valentine via Zoom, and Jim Costello is here in the audience. Before I move along in the agenda, I would like to just read one comment into the record, if I may. Due to the public health and safety concern related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the governor's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law. This meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on Pennfield, Town of Penfield's website, www.penfield.org, and on the Town of Penfield's Government Access Channel 1303. This meeting will also be transcribed at a later date. So I just want to make sure that that is part of our record. First item on the agenda is the minutes, and we have the minutes of the March 11, 2020 meeting, and I would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move it, Mr. Supervisor.
Second. It was moved by Debbie Draw, seconded by Bob Ockenden. Thank you very much. I'll ask, are there any questions or comments about those minutes? Okay, seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote of approval of those minutes being March 11, 2020.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Four aye, five aye.
And LaFountain, aye.
LaFountain.
Okay, thank you. The minutes are officially approved. The next item is monthly reports, and I would like to recognize and thank all of our departments and department heads for submitting the monthly reports. I think most everyone is in. If we happen to be missing one, I'm sure it'll be in and part of the record for Friday, which is our due date. So again, thank you to all of our department heads for getting the monthly reports in. This evening, we do not have any public hearings. There are no guests, and we'll move on to action items. The first action item is 83 Devonshire Court. It's a request for a hold harmless agreement, and Mark Valentine, our Director of Planning and Town Engineer, Mark, if you would tee this up for the board.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, and good evening, Board. Received a letter from Mr. Vangelo requesting hold harmless agreement to put a portion of his deck within one of our storms who were easements. We went out and took a look at that, and, you know, our recommendation is maybe to shorten up a little bit. I'll pop up a screen share in a moment. You can see his request as well as the sketch of what he's looking to do. So let's go back to his letter. If I scroll up a little bit, you can see where his deck is. He's located at 83 Devonshire Circle. You can also see that it's part of a townhouse development. The neighbor has a little bit of a deck, and then each house has a fence that goes between the properties. He's looking to construct his deck out that the northern portion of the deck would not be an easement. As you come across that angle, we have a catch basin here in the upper left corner, and then a storm drainage easement. Aside that, he was looking to encroach into that easement, and he requested four feet into that easement. PRC has discussed it as part of our group. We were recommending to pull it back slightly, either to put the deck back and just have the stairs in the easement, or possibly flip and then put the stairs on the other side of the deck. And I spoke to Mr. Vangelo. He said he was supportive of either option, wanted to share both of those with the board so he and his contractor, you know, could have options if either was granted.
Okay, all right. Board, questions for Mark?
Mark, I guess I have a question. Is it your preference that the steps would go on that side right there that you're pointing to, or on the other? I mean, when you said either/or, is it, how did that?
Yeah, our concern was having actual pilings in the, is a more permanent structure. You know, this board has allowed fences, other things to be in, that's, you know, considered more movable. So looking at the stairs themselves, you know, the stairs are something that's more removable or movable if had to be. I don't expect many to be over there. Easement comes way back in his property. Our catch basin is over here, and then our pipe is well off of that, so we're not impacting our pipe. It's just a matter of access to it. So our suggestion was either pull his deck back, you know, within that, and then let the, you know, if the stairs are in easement, that's fine, or, you know, put the stairs on the other side so that, you know, only, again, only the stairs would be in easement and not the deck itself. And he said that he was good with either one, you know, wanted to float that out. If the board was good with either, then that gives him some options. He'd go back to his contractor and they'd sketch up, you know, an alternate option, you know, which worked best.
And also, Mark, I would assume that he had to go before his, the board of the townhome complex already and get this all approved as well, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure where he is with his HOA. Maybe he's floating the options out first and then go back to the HOA. I can check back with him and see what, you know, where he is in that process.
Okay.
Are there any other comments, questions, discussion on this particular matter?
No, it looks pretty, pretty good. I mean, he's giving them two options. Just need to hear back from them in the end, but need a motion to move forward.
I would, if there are no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion of approval for the deck within the easement area. I like the fact that the PRC worked to not have any permanent structures within that easement, and the usual items would, in fact, be included as part of the letter, meaning that if the town ever had to get in to make any improvements or adjustments to the pipe or to the catch spacing in that area, and any, any portion of that deck might need to be removed, it's at the owner's expense to take care of that, and that's one of our normal items. But I would entertain a motion of approval if, if the board is so inclined.
I move that we move to approve this request with all that that you just mentioned as part of the reasoning.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Andy Moore. Moved by Linda Cole, seconded by Andy Moore. Thank you. I would just ask, Mr. Valentine, Mark, is there any additional items that you believe should be entered into the record that are not already part of the record?
No, I think you captured them. You know, we would go through the normal hold, you know, follow-up with Mr. Vangelo after this, and then share with him that he needs to, you know, enter an agreement. We've got the legal part of that, and then have the supervisor execute it based on the board's approval.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion. I'll ask our clerk if she would please call the roll of approval for this matter.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Five aye.
Five ayes. The matter is approved. Thank you very much, Mark. We'll move on to the second item, and it's 1751 Baird Road. It's a sidewalk waiver request. And again, Mark, if you would update the board on this particular matter.
Sure. So this is part of the subdivision applications before the planning board. The planning board is wrapping up. It's known as the Flaherty subdivision. So it's off of Legacy Circle, corner of Legacy Circle and Baird Road. There's a portion of land that was remaining, so the planning board's working through a four-lot subdivision with that piece. So there is sidewalks existing on Baird Road, but there's not sidewalks on Legacy Circle. So the developer is asking for a waiver on that and then to pay the sidewalk fund. So again, I'll share my screen up there. And then, so if the board is seeing the screen, this is the parcel 1751 Baird Road address. There is sidewalks along Baird Road on the frontage. There are no sidewalks on Legacy Circle currently, but as part of our sidewalk policy, this developer will be responsible for his portion that runs on Legacy Circle. So according to his letter, it was 342 feet. He's asking for a sidewalk waiver from. I ran it through our formula. Basically, we look at what the total cost of the sidewalk would be at our rates. Basically, it'd be just over $13,000 is what the cost of the sidewalk installation would be. And then our sidewalk waiver fund basically says, you know, they would give up of that amount into the sidewalk fund. So if the waiver was granted, he would owe a sidewalk waiver fee of $6,641. That would go into the general sidewalk fund that would pay for sidewalks in other locations. You know, again, PRC didn't feel that sidewalks, since there are no other sidewalks in Legacy Circle, to put in a small piece along the frontage really didn't make sense. You know, if the waiver was granted, that those funds could be used elsewhere in town to, you know, fill in gaps or better suited as part of the pedestrian connectivity of the town.
Okay, Mark, thank you. I'll ask the board, board questions for Mark about this particular matter, and any questions, concerns that you may have.
No, I think that, Tony, this is Andy, I think that's a reasonable compromise and solution.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Seeing no other comments at this time, would entertain a motion for the sidewalk waiver request.
Moved. I'll move it.
I'll second it, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, so it's been moved by Andy Moore, seconded by Debbie Draw. This will be to waive the sidewalk along Legacy Circle. In lieu of that, and consistent with our formula that Mr. Valentine highlighted, sidewalks will be installed on Baird. The sidewalks on Legacy Circle will not. However, the developer will pay a fee into the general fund and allow the town to take that money and build sidewalks at other locations. That particular fund is dedicated to sidewalks. It cannot be used for any other item in the town other than sidewalks. And so with that, it's been moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote of approval for the sidewalk waiver request.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
She's muted.
Cole?
Yeah.
Is she muted?
Cole?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Five aye.
Thank you. The matter is approved. Mark, thank you very much. If, if you continue to join us, welcome to do so. Also, understand that if you have other commitments, we recognize that as well. We'll move on to item C, and item C is 2086 Five Mile Line Road, request for conditional use permit to allow a hair salon, Mr. Costello. And I would ask that the applicant, I know will be joining us, and so welcome to the, to the applicant. And then I would ask Mr. Costello if he would just update us from our public hearing and where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As you know, we did have the public hearing on May 6. Sarah made her presentation. She's taking over the property at 2086 Five Mile Line Road. Her intent is not to add on to the property at any point in time in the immediate future to remodel what is there now. She indicated her hours of operations will be consistent with those within the Four Corners zoning district. And there, as we noted at the public hearing, the property is one of four properties that is owned by Dr. Pignato, or previously owned by Dr. Pignato, in which there is a, an agreement to allow for cross-access and parking on each of the properties with one another. So that's kind of where we are right now. Sarah, any comment?
So I see, I see right now, I think I see, do I see Sam?
Yep. It's me and Jordan over here.
Okay, got it. Sorry. All right, thank you. Thank you.
More commonly known as JNS Properties.
JNS Properties.
JNS Carbone Properties.
There you go. Very good. Thank you. Okay, board, held a public hearing last week. Any questions, comments for the applicants?
No, I think it was very well presented, and you answered all the questions I would have had and did have at the time. You know, I think, yeah, everything happening right now, we don't know when things will open or what you'll need as you set up within. If you can come back and tell us how you set it up with the words if we approve it, but.
We will.
That's interesting part of the whole situation, but otherwise, you will, you know, I think you did a great job, and I certainly support it.
Thank you.
For the board's sake, Samantha's working previously on getting a sign design put together for your review. I told her that once I receive that, I will get it to you via email, and you can make a comment to it, and then we'll talk about it real quickly.
Okay.
At a work session. She also has to go to the Historic Preservation Board for that sign, as it is in the district. So she's still got a little bit of work to do, but she's given herself a lot of lead time to get this done, so she's not in a mad rush.
Okay.
Jim, isn't this sign going to be part of the other sign that's already there?
The signs will be divided between the restaurant and Samantha's.
Right.
It would fit right underneath the Five Mile Line Cafe sign.
Okay. All right. Board, other questions for the applicant and the applicant's co-owner? I've already given them the hard questions, so feel free.
And he failed.
And he failed. Thank you, Sam, for that. I wasn't going to mention that, but thank you for that. All right. Board, other, other, other comments, questions, either for Sam and Jordan or for Mr. Costello? Okay, Mr. Costello, I would ask, is there anything that you believe should be added to the record that we have not already added into the record either at the public hearing or here tonight?
Not regarding this application.
Okay, very good. Board, I would entertain a motion of approval for this project?
Moved.
Go on.
It's been moved by Andy Moore and seconded by Linda Cole.
Sure.
Okay. And the, the standard conditions of approval will be part of that. Obviously, any permits that might be needed for remodeling, that they be obtained, that the sign, before it goes up, that the board has the opportunity to take a look at that. There will need to be an inspection by the fire marshal, which is a standard business for any new business going into a particular location. And Mr. Costello will be preparing a letter, an approval letter, that will be going out to you here over the next week or so.
Mr. LaFountain, we will actually be doing a resolution for the.
Oh, good point. Thank you. Yep, thank you, Mr. Costello. Thank you. Yes, that'll be up before the board next Wednesday on the 20th, so tune in, as they say, tune in. All right, seeing no further discussion, no further comments, the matter was moved and seconded, and I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Draw?
I would vote yes. And Google that, Ryan.
Jordan, that's my sister.
Jordan, yes.
I get it all the time, I'm sorry.
Cole?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Five aye.
All right, congratulations, folks. We look forward to you opening up here sooner rather than later, to be done, obviously, safely, and we look forward to you being part of the Penfield community.
Thank you.
We're excited. Thanks so much for your time, everybody.
Yes, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Be well and be safe.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item D under action items, and that's 1738 Penfield Road, request for conditional use permit to allow a hair salon. And again, I would ask Mr. Costello if you would update us from the public hearing last week.
Thank you. We did have the public hearing on May 6. Sarah Olajarsik is proposing to open up a hair salon at 1738 Penfield Road. I think it'll be her and possibly three others that'll be working on the site. As we mentioned, there will be some major remodeling on, on the residence. It was a single-family residence, is now being converted, and she will be remodeling the interior of the building. In addition, the owner of the property, who she's leasing from, will be installing additional parking on the site to accommodate her business. And as I told you at the public hearing, the owner's wife has made an application to the town to allow her to operate as an esthetician within the garage area. She will be coming to you in June, on June 17, to discuss that matter as well. But all the other conditions pertaining to the Four Corners District have been complied with by Sarah.
Okay, great. Board, questions about this particular application based on the public hearing and the comments from Mr. Costello? And do we have Sarah with us?
Sarah just needs to turn on her camera.
I'm here. Hi.
All right, very good. We just want to make sure that you're, you're listening and part of and can see what's going on. Okay, board, would entertain a motion of approval for Sarah's project?
I'll move.
I move that we approve. Okay. Bob, let Bob do it.
Back in.
I'll second.
So Bob Ockenden moved, and Linda Cole seconded. Thank you very much. And again, similar to the previous application, the standard conditions will apply. Obviously, if there is any building permits that might be needed, visit by the fire marshal, take a look at your sign before that goes up, and then, then what I'll call just the usual items, and Mr. Costello will be preparing a resolution for that for our next meeting, which is next Wednesday, the 20th.
Perfect. Sounds great.
All right, so, board, we have a motion in a second. I would ask our clerk to please call the roll for approval of this project.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Five aye.
All right, Sarah, we, we look forward to you being part of the Penfield community. We wish you all the best. I hope that everything associated with COVID-19 continues to go as smoothly as what it appears so that businesses can start to open up again, and we look forward to you being part of the Penfield community.
I can't wait. Thank you so much. Very excited.
You be well and be safe.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you. Community Choice Aggregation, the Penfield CCA, and this one is myself. If the board recalls, we held a public hearing on March 4, which seems almost about a year ago now, and we held the public hearing open until the end of March to give folks an opportunity to provide any input, either for or against the project. I have received a number of emails from different residents that wanted to go on record as supporting the Penfield CCA. I have not received anything other than support for the project. We were going to try and, and actually had a meeting set up to, to have the Energy and Environmental Advisory Committee meet and discuss this matter after the public hearing and after listening to the comments and everything like that, and that was due in April, and that meeting was canceled because of COVID-19. So the EEAC has not weighed back in on this. However, I will say that EEAC was supportive of the proposed legislation that came forth, and to the best of my knowledge, that, none of that has changed from any of the members and that they had recommended that we continue moving forward. So I put this as an information item tonight in the event that the board wanted to have some feedback back from EEAC, and if you were comfortable with my comments, we could also put it to a vote tonight to move it to the next meeting on the 20th of May to approve the local law for CCA for Penfield. So depending upon how you feel and the direction you want to go, I'll ask the board at this time.
Mr. Supervisor, I'll, I'll start out real quick. Certainly, I appreciate your leadership on this issue, and we did hear from residents a while ago. It seems like this is an initiative that has value as other communities start to go down this road. Certainly, I think the value can be with conservation, which all municipalities and Penfield is a leader in our conservation efforts and our green efforts, if you want to call it that. And certainly, there's value as far as financial cost savings. And if, if indeed, when we go through the process, like other towns have, there's a proven and verified and documented cost savings to residents, then it's a win-win for everybody involved. And so I certainly hope that that's where we're going to go down the road and that there is a cost savings for residents as we move into this type of initiative, and so therefore, I intend on supporting this measure moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other comments, board?
Yeah, I support us moving forward. I think we've gotten all the information that we need to go forward. It's, it's a long process. This is really the first step to move forward, so I think we should, and I support that.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Thank you. Other comments, board? Okay, I would, I would entertain a, a motion to move this forward, to adopt this legislation at our next meeting, which would be Wednesday, the 20th, and would entertain a motion to support moving forward with that.
I make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Moved by Bob Ockenden. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Supervisor.
Second by Debbie Draw. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll ask staff to put together a resolution, working with Mr. Horowitz, Town Attorney, to have this brought to the, to the legislative session next Wednesday, the 20th, for approval of CCA Penfield. Seeing no further discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Five aye.
Okay, thank you, board. This brings us to our second information item, Shadow Pines Conceptual Master Plan. And again, I put this on as an information item. The board has not had an opportunity to discuss this. We did receive a lot of comments at the public hearing. We also, excuse me, the public information meeting. We also have received a number of follow-up emails and, and what have you. And it, and again, we kept the information. And again, we kept the information meeting open until the end of March, and until the COVID-19 hit, and we have not circled back with anything. And the purpose of putting it on the agenda tonight as information is that I would encourage us to take all the materials that have been submitted, and that we'd be ready to have a conversation about our direction with this at our next work session, which will be the end of the month, and that would be on the 27th. And this would give us an opportunity, and I'm not sure, I'll ask Mr. Costello, but, Jim, have all of the comments that have come in, either to my office, to your office, to Mark's office, have all of those been forwarded to the Town Board? So I'll look for the Town Board's acknowledgement as well as Jim's.
Tony, I don't believe they have. I think we've been collecting them. I know that Lisa was doing a great job of getting them to us, but I'm not certain yet that the Board has received that material, but I will check tomorrow morning.
Okay. So what I would like to do, Board, is we will just verify what you have received or not received. We'll make sure that we get that to you, and then we'll have some broader conversation at our next work session to discuss the path forward. Does that seem reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Because there is no formal action, I'm not going to look for a motion or a second on this. What I will ask our clerk to do is that we will add this as an action item for the May 27th work session. We'll move on to our third item, Item C, and it's customary agricultural operations. And Bob, I know this is something you asked to put on the agenda as an information item, and so I'm going to turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, and I think that I see us on camera here, we both may have spent a little time out in the sun today. I think vitamin D is going to do it still, better than last Saturday where a frostbite was more the concern.
I thank you for your effort in organizing that. I think we have, to date, now placed something in the neighborhood of about 63,000 or 64,000 masks out into the community, not only Penfield, but I know there were some other communities that flip-flop back and forth, but the key is, is that we got those masks into the hands of those that might need them, and make sure that everyone is safe as we continue to look at reopening. So thank you for that, and the next time, the sunscreen's on me.
Great, great, thank you, and thanks to all the volunteers and helpers that assisted in those two days, really had a nice turnout, and it worked out pretty well, so thanks to the helpers. So, Mr. Supervisor, I appreciate you including that as an informational item tonight on the agenda. I have spoken to some of you about the current Town Code as it relates to Town Agricultural Operations. One specific piece of the code that's of interest to me, as a result and part of some of the conversations with residents over their desire to maintain animals that just check-ins for the purposes of generating fresh eggs, and I believe now more than ever, in part due to the COVID-19 pandemic that we're currently dealing with, people are always looking for ways to generate and/or produce their own food, and whatever creative ways they can find, maybe vegetable gardens, which I think are on the rise, again, fresh eggs, those types of things. As we've all been witness to recently, it doesn't take much panic or worry to take the availability of some grocery products, it's challenging to find. So with that said, I'm interested in knowing more about the code and perhaps the history behind where we are today with it.
Okay, so I'm going to try not to put Mr. Costello on too big of a spot, but with his longevity within this community, I'm going to ask him to, you know, maybe at a very high level, talk a little bit about where we are and why we're where we are over the years, and then if there is a direction that the Board would like us to look at, we certainly can tee that up appropriately. So, Jim, if you wouldn't mind, maybe a little educational review?
Be happy to, thank you. To date, for the last 60 years or so, the Town of Penfield's ordinances have required that any type of fur-bearing or fowl being raised in the Town of Penfield, and this even applies to kenneling, you need to have a minimum of five acres of property to do so. In addition to that, any area where the livestock or fowl is being stored or put in an area where it's being maintained, has to be 100 feet from any property line, and I'm thinking, of course, that the reason they did that 60 years ago was because it was a town of transition, we still had a lot of agricultural activity taking place next to new housing that was being built during the 60s, 70s, and the intent was to try and separate livestock and fowl from the new developments. That doesn't mean that it can't be done, I know that there are people that have rabbits and all sorts of other things that they've done on their half-acre lots and less, and been able to do that without violating Town Codes. We have not received a lot of requests for this type of thing, where you could have chickens on your property. It did come up a couple of years ago, and it has come again recently, but we have not had an overwhelming request for it to date by most of the residents.
So Board, any additional questions that we might be able to answer? But then, more importantly, is there a particular direction that you would like us to have staff take a look at, and provide any additional materials or information for you?
Tony, this is, I'm sorry, Bob, did you want to go ahead and talk?
Go ahead, Andy.
No, I was just going to say that, you know, Bob gave me a phone call about a week ago to talk about this issue. Certainly, I looked at the Town Code, and it does seem like it's an old Town Code with the five-acre restriction on it, and probably, as Mr. Costello pointed out, adequate, justified back, you know, 40, 50 years ago, but maybe is not reasonable, you know, in today's times. And as Mr. Ockington mentioned earlier, and I agree with him, I think that residents and families and parents are starting to look at more healthy habits when it comes to their diet, and, you know, more organic-type habits when they come to the diet, whether it's gardens in the backyard for vegetables, or fruits, or possibly chickens, or hens. And so I would certainly support looking to change in that code, updating that code, which would allow more residents the ability to decide whether they want to have chickens or hens, you know, as a part of their property to provide those fresh eggs and so forth. It doesn't mean that, you know, the chickens are going to run wild in someone's property or anything like that, I mean, I think it can be done in an efficient manner and in a equitable manner, depending on acreage of land, or, you know, we can set up some dimensions. I know other towns, you know what Bob pointed out to me the other day, that, you know, I believe Arondacoit allows chickens, I believe Pittsburgh allows chickens, Bob even mentioned to me that the City of Rochester and the Town of Brighton all have Town Codes and ordinances that allow residents to have chickens, you know, in certain acreage of property, so many chickens, per size of their parcel, and then how it's defined, where they can go in a chicken coop or in a run, I think it's called, a certain square footage that the fowl can move around in. So I think it's something that we should look at, and again, as Mr. Ockington and I were talking, and we were talking about how people are starting to look at healthier lifestyles, organic eating, certainly COVID-19, as was mentioned before, is one of the catalysts to, you know, I think this new surge of people looking to have backyard gardens for vegetables, fruits, and so forth, and I think this is just complementary to that. And I certainly would support the Town looking at updating that code and taking a look at what other towns are doing, and kind of, you know, copy and paste, or copycatting what seems to be successful in other towns, and making code that might actually be good for Penfield moving forward. So I might just kind of throw that out for consideration, no decision needs to be made tonight, but certainly, with Board looking forward or moving forward with some update to Town Code when it comes to allowing chickens or hens on property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other comments, Board?
Well, I do agree as well, I think Andy said it really well. There are a lot of chickens in Penfield, and they're not supposed to be there, but people raise them, and the neighbors don't complain. I think it's something that we look forward on opening up and updating our ordinance to allow, to allow something that is happening in other towns, is happening in our own town. But do it the right way, make sure, you know, you don't have chickens like right next to somebody's house or something like that. There's ways to put it together that won't be offensive to the next-door neighbor, but we're all in it together, as they say, and I think this is a good example of something we should be pursuing. Thank you, Bob, for bringing it up.
Okay, thank you, Linda, thank you. Any other further comments? I would recommend that what we do moving forward is to have staff do a little bit of a review and survey, if you will, across some of the towns in and around our area, comparable towns, so I think of Arondacoit, Brighton, Perrington, Pittsburgh, Webster, and maybe have them take a look, identify what criteria they have on the books today, what, if any, problems that they have experienced. They also have the ability to go into General Code or the E-code and take a look at that. And why don't we plan here over the next few weeks for the Board to have an update from staff as to what they've learned, and then we can talk about what next steps that we might want to move forward with, if that sounds reasonable.
Sounds good, Mr. Supervisor, I'm good with that.
Okay, very good. So we'll do that. Again, what we're asking staff to do is to do some review, so I don't see a need for a motion second, we'll carry it on the agenda, and as soon as they put some information together, we'll get it back up on the agenda for the Board to review and talk about next steps.
Great, thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our agenda, and there being no further business to come before the Board this evening. The May 13, 2020 work session will stand adjourned at 7:44 PM. I want to thank all the Board members for joining us, staff, there's only three of us here in the auditorium, but we're properly distanced apart and observing all the rules and regulations from the CDC, and I know there's a number of folks watching on Penfield TV. I'd also like to recognize and thank Penfield TV for all their work of patching together and pulling together and connecting us with all of this technology, so that we're able to carry on and do the work for the people of Penfield. I'll ask that everyone be well, be safe, and we look forward to getting through this sooner rather than later safely. Have a great evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.